To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, in the temple with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'm helpless.
Sure. All right. The end here of days.
Okay. So. I had prepared some projected reports. We have. I think one more town payment to receive that we're anticipating tomorrow, they've switched over to ACH payment. Going forward, it'll just be ACH, so we'll have received all of those payments. And then I'll need to make an adjustment between our advocacy aid and our statewide education funds. It's just easier to post it all to add it and see when it comes in. I'll work on that for next year, do something a little bit differently, but. And then just else. There we go. Zoom in and that didn't work. So I wanted to, so, okay. Um, I have. Uh, we'll be sending out a check for capital reserves this week. We still need to update paperwork, I need to sit with Scott and set up the system so that we are. Routinely, as we incur expenses that are being reimbursed through capital reserves, that that's being timely processed. We don't have that in place right now, so it's a matter of. Uh, sitting with Scott and working with him and coordinating with uh facilities, uh because they have all the information, it's being accounted for. We just need to write the letters and send out the information to request the reimbursements. Um, so I have those showing us encumbrances, if you will, they'll be coming in, we haven't received them yet, but they will be coming in. Um, and I did my last. Presentation, which was based on April, really, we did talk about how tuition. Uh, it was over budgeted. Um, it's, there's just no getting around it, it was wrong, so that's, that is what it is. Um, we're doing a better job with that moving forward and certainly having the tuition agreements in place with the various districts will happen. Um, you can see that our special education aid, which was formerly referred to as CATA from the state. Uh, was higher than we had anticipated. Um, I believe that uh the legislative proposed bill passed in which. The state will now be obligated to provide at least eighty percent of the formula. And in the past, that hasn't been happening. It's substantially lower. Um, so that was a big discussion on Friday, my, my meeting, um, just uh what the process will be for that and what the state will expect when we do our MS twenty fours. Um, because of course, for this upcoming year, we budgeted a little bit lower, because I always am conservative, my revenue and I budgeted on the lower side. So I think that maybe next year, we'll be looking at. More special aid. Assistance from the state than we have had. Um, of course, that depends upon how many students we've placed out and what our qualified expenses are. Um, our Medicaid is substantially lower, and again, this coming year, we budgeted on a more conservative basis. Um, so we'll see how that irons out, there are a lot of proposed changes with Medicaid and. How you're able to claim or what you're able to claim, so we're just gonna have to kind of roll that. Right, I think, and see where that footballs, yes.
So, um, with all those changes, are, are you all gonna continue to use Medicaid apart? Is it, I guess, some, there's some districts that are. Just saying that it's not worth the half.
So as far as I know, right now, we are still gonna continue claiming for Medicaid, we might be. Uh, making some changes to the process, I guess.
We have to make changes to the process.
So we're only making some changes to the process, but we, it is our intention at this time to continue to claim. Um, for whatever Medicaid services that we can, in fact, we're working on. Um, trying to develop an internal invoice uh for special ed transportation that we can move to support uh claiming. Uh, because we provide our own transportation for the most part, so we're working on trying to get that set up so we can. Claim, make claims based on those expenses.
Right.
Um, so, but it's gonna, it's gonna, it's gonna be an evolving process.
Well, yeah, and to tag on to me, as long as. You're not paying more for the person doing it than what you're receiving, it's still worthwhile.
Right.
Right?
Um. So, but in the, in the, the grand scheme of things, when everything uh rushes out here, we're short on the about a hundred and thirty two thousand on the revenue. So that's primarily the tuition.
Well, you had offsets to it, though.
Yeah, we had offsets that, that helped.
When you're predicting that far ahead, it's difficult.
Right.
You made, we made adjustments. Or now that you have a better idea of what's coming, you can make more adjustments when we set tax rate.
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh. Okay. So then.
That's like, what, thirteen, I mean, it's not even that many kids.
Right.
To put it in context for people, it's not like a lot of children you were off by, it's thirteen bodies.
Right.
That's.
That's true, that's true. Um, okay, so then, there are the expenses and. So my, my regular ed um expenses. Why, oh, I can't, okay. My regular ed expenses, right now, they're over about um a hundred and fifteen thousand, we had. Um. Sorry, I'm gonna open up my. I'll be here just so I can. Apologize.
No worries.
Okay, so, um, in our regular ed expenses, we didn't have monies for substitutes. Right?
Right.
To date, as of like thirty minutes ago, our expenses for substitutes this year is a hundred and thirty two thousand.
Hmm.
Okay. So you see, you see there that there's a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars um. Over. Expended based on our encumbrances and everything, which we're still, you know, we still have a lot that we're gonna process within the next week. Um, but of a hundred and fourteen, like a hundred and thirty two was for substitutes that wasn't budgeted for. Okay. Um.
Do you have questions now or later?
I don't care. You can do whatever. But I can do.
So, just refresh my memory.
And that's be, was that because, A. We all had the discussion and thought we do vacancy management, you're not budgeting for subs? Or was that an administration choice on how to cut their?
So, that was a, um, we eliminated the permanent sub positions that are in.
Yeah.
Because most of them were unfilled, so we eliminated those. Um. I was accustomed to, you have those type of positions, and then you have substitute money because that position doesn't necessarily cover everything.
Yeah.
But that's not the way we were doing things here, and I didn't realize that when we eliminated that, that pretty much eliminated my substitute pool.
They weren't carrying, I thought we were carrying separate substitute lines.
There was very little that was carried.
Because the question was asked, we noticed that and asked the question, no.
But it was after.
Cutting out so that we could say, to, as I remember, that, that was one of the lines that kept getting cut out because, oh, we'll save some money there.
Right, okay.
So kind of all vacancy savings and.
Yes, so it is, yes, okay, yeah, I'll go with that.
Yeah.
Um, we included um funds this year.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Yeah.
Honestly.
Yeah. So, um, for vocation instruction, we are a little bit over in that category as well. Um, in uh for the budget for this school year, we did a net budgeting and not a gross budgeting, which is what had been done previously. Um, next for the upcoming school year, we stopped doing that and we're gross budgeting. Um, but again, uh nineteen thousand, that's only a handful of students.
Yeah.
Um, and we have had increased student enrollment and participation at River Tech, River Valley Tech, so that.
Is the special ed be from vacancy, it's from openings, right?
Yes, yes. Um, and I did build in some money in there for encumbrances for tuition and her, um, because we're still working through that, um, you know, Kathy and I sat and we met.
Yeah.
Um, but I. Just based on past experience, I'd rather hold a little bit extra than give more money back.
Yep.
Later, so. Um.
In fact, I'll just scooch, if you can see the. Description.
Category.
Yeah.
There you go.
Is that good?
That's perfect.
Okay, thank you. All right. Um, and then the next, oh, occupational therapy, we're over marginally, we've been running over on that a little bit, it hasn't been a large dollar amount, I haven't dug into it to figure out why. Um, for twenty one hundred dollars. I, I figured it wasn't. Um, critical. Um, technology support, um, we have, um, we. Net budgeted for our expenses as well, because um what has been done historically is. Is there's been the thought that, okay, we're getting X amount back from E-rate, so that reduces our expense and we budget for the reduced amount. Um, that's changing for next year going forward, that was, you know, discussed during budget process where it's, it's gross budgeted and the revenue is included.
Yeah, so you're gonna show the revenue separate of the expenditure.
Yeah, right, so that's, that's factored into the building, into the budget next year. Um, for the budget for this year, um, as you recall, things were just kind of really very scary and. Just relying on past practice a lot, um, so.
Question on the, on. The second, third, and fourth lines, probably more for Xander maybe than yourself, not sure, that's like five hundred and thirty thousand of dollars of unspent money.
So some of that is, um, you'll see the budget adjustments are, are blank there, um, we had, um. Uh, to discuss the fact that we were going to, um. Contact out, and the line that we had in place was twelve hundreds, and so I'm going to back.
Oh, hundred in the special ed.
Yeah, I'm gonna correct that, so.
Gotcha.
For the annual report, that will be fixed, and we're talking about this going forward, because we're going to be contracting services for some of these roles again next year. Uh, because it's worked well this year, so.
Wouldn't you leave them in their own sections, though, and then just put in a three hundred, or do we not have a chance to?
We didn't have the three hundred and, and so. But yeah, people went with what we knew, so.
That's fine.
We're gonna create that three hundred in the, in the appropriate function, so for the next year, and I think I'm going to get that fixed even for this year, because I just say want. Some continuity, this is really the first year that we've contracted as many services um as we have.
Can only do it if there's a dollar in that category going, let's check.
So not function, it has to be in the object line?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure, but let's double check that.
Okay. Um. All right, so the board services was a little bit over, we had the insurance allocation when we went um off market into Primex, so that was a big factor there. Our financial services, we've been running this all along because of change of personnel and benefit choices, that, that's been fairly consistent. Um, and then I did want to point out in the facility operations uh line, that we do have just under twenty thousand in there for various expenses for North Charles Town. For the monitoring.
Good changeover.
Yeah. Um. Food service transfers, uh, the contract uh had a hundred and forty thousand in it, we'd been carrying a hundred and ten. Um, so that, you know, when you, when you do the budget. You don't know that, so, um, that's been adjusted, and also for going forward for next year. Um, we budgeted, I think, a hundred and forty based on what we expected here, and the contract's running very close to that as well. And so, and that, that does include the free breakfast.
And then we've got the big surplus in transportation operations, because the board chose to pay off those leases as opposed to paying the payments.
Yes.
Um, so it pushed the surplus forward.
And then. I'm not moving up that.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh.
Yeah.
Uh-oh, Remnant help, I can't something. He's helping me and I keep doing it, uh, okay, so anyway, at the bottom of the schedule, I have like what our estimated savings is in, in the expenses and what. The, um, and that's the net of the revenue and the expenses.
Yeah.
Um, and then we're gonna have a transfer to the reserves of two hundred and fifty thousand, so right now, I'm projecting that we're gonna have about seven hundred and eighties, almost eight hundred thousand. Left to return for, to reduce taxes. Um.
For a budget of this magnitude, I have to say that's fantastic results, I mean, well done.
Come way down.
It's come way down, it's come way down, and you know, and it might, it might still go up as we're cleaning up, but.
And I mean, part of that, I mean, it's great, right, because it's, it's hanging up all the lines, understanding where things should be. It's doing a little bit of what the budget committee had asked about vacancy savings, it's also the fact, though, that. You know, we're starting to hire more people, right? Which is great, you're filling some of those roles.
Right.
And filling where some of the needs are, so I mean, no, that's.
But it's better to, to, uh, we can reduce this gradually too.
Yeah.
Because otherwise, it's just gonna create a huge.
Yeah, cliff.
Yeah.
I think the budget committee did a great job, and the new big career job manager.
I love this, yeah, yeah, it looks good, that's a nice report, they'll be very happy.
Okay. Good, thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody have any other questions for Lori?
All right, and I will, I will finish, well, no, I will continue to work on, um, developing it by, um. Community. Um.
I think just an overall, what do you think, I think just an overall, like. Snapshot, I don't think it needs to be broken down big time. Uh, in fact, I think the budget committee talked about that, and just, you know, just like a total dollar amount maybe of. What you're running in surplus.
Mm-hmm.
Just on the expense side in each one of the little category budgets.
Not by community, but just by function.
Well, what, well, just not, not all broken down by functions even, just maybe, you know, North Charles Town is running this much. Charles Town is running this much, you know, high school's running this much.
Okay.
That's like a thirty thousand foot deal.
Okay, well, I have been trying to work on, um. Getting a quarterly report to you guys, I know the last one I was away, and so that delayed, and then, um, I want to give it to you again here, um, one of my summer projects. Oh, in my free time. It, one of my summer project, what I want to try to do is I want to try to, there's a tool within our accounting software that would allow us to build out the report, like.
Yeah.
You know, the, um.
Like Excel sense.
The Excel sense, yeah, so I want to work on, on building that out, so it'll.
Auto-populator, yeah.
Yes, because right now, it's, I'm still.
Yeah.
Doing too much work.
It's a lot to do it manually, yeah, with that budget.
Yes.
When, when does the board need to vote? Uh, to return the taxes, because when does this? Statement go out, or do we just, that's, that's default?
So, so we don't, we, we don't have the authority to retain anything, so as I clean up.
Okay.
It's just gonna go back, so if you had the option to, the, the, the communities had, um, given us the authorization to retain up to five percent, which the RSA's allow. Um, then you would need to be looking at, like, hey, we want to retain this amount and we want to send back the rest. Um, but here, you know, we'll finish up the annual, um, report, um, and when I have that information, you'll have it in this. Then you'll know what can go back and it all has to go back.
I think I'm just confused, because in prior years, we'd use that money to do things.
So if there were, if there were.
Things to do.
We would, today.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
But we did, so. My personal, my personal opinion is, is that we should have been strongly considering use of these funds for. Uh, facility improvements and maintenance, um, like larger projects. Um, I don't think we've done that historically. Um, and, um, with. Uh, there's just a bit of a time crunch this year with personnel and, and being able to have those kind of conversations. Um, this year for a variety of reasons, so.
Uh, is there anything large hanging?
Well, all of our asbestos programs and, and, you know, there are, there are things that come up, and I don't have any, I don't have any.
Other than the high school, though, those would be site-specific.
Right, right.
Right, because of the formulas, but is there anything?
I'm not aware of any.
Yeah, do we have a box that we're looking at?
No, we were not looking at any vehicles this year.
Yeah, not on big.
No, the only thing is, um, it's encumbered, it was the, the transportation software, so.
Right, and we are.
Yeah, that's, that's already encumbered, so, um, in fact, I'm, yeah.
So probably too, with the. With the, um, study going on right now, it's, it's probably prudent to let it go back. And then figure out its path moving forward, depending on what the public.
I agree, it's funny, no, I'm just, I'm just confused, because you've done stuff with the money.
It's been a big discussion.
Yes, if you need, if I need a large ticket items, I would be bringing them to your attention.
Either the last meeting or now.
Yeah, definitely. Um, I do, you wanted an update on the, um, survey project for the.
We have that, um, for the next item, so if you're all set for this, then we can move to that, or you can roll right into it with that.
Uh, I'm good if you guys are done with this.
Any other questions on the budget?
No, that's great, all right, can we get it posted in the thingy? Yes, I'll just email it.
Just in the thing to figure out.
I shared.
One, okay.
The budget, the budget committee folder.
They like to see it, and I told them that when I got it, I would forward it to them, but I would not forward it before the board had a chance to discuss it.
Thank you. Um, okay, I will. Okay, so, um, I had asked, um, our engineer for an update, and the wetland delineation is complete, and this update was provided on June tenth. Um, they began the survey work on June ninth, and will continue over this week and potentially into the next week, so is that this week? Last week. But I don't know, they should be done soon, I think, with surveying. Um, and he said that, um, we need to, we're getting to the point where we need to get together to develop a geotechnical RFP to put it out for bid for pavement investigation work. So once the survey work is completed, they can also get started on the secondary access plan and work, so that's where we're at.
Okay.
So what I didn't recall, um, when I haven't been to the contractor, are they writing the RFP or is that together for the? If they were putting new pavement investigation work.
I think they're supposed to, probably, I think it's to make sure, so everything like we.
But, but that's, that's the status on that.
Do you need us to call back that committee sooner rather than later to have a meeting with them? I know it's not the summer season and the people that run that committee get their, their.
Right. Um, maybe I should chat with Rowan and just see.
Yeah, you want to let me know that's where you get it.
Okay.
We jump.
So just curious, where, where is this? So.
High school, the high school parking lot and entranceway. Yeah, and there was a question about, uh, the fact that we don't have a second form of egress, which was a problem. Back when we had the shear winds that put trees down across the road. So we figured if we're gonna embark on getting this fixed and upgraded, that we should see what it would cost to make a second egress.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions for Lori? On the parking lot project?
Yeah.
All right. The suicide prevention handbook approval.
So, uh, we, uh, the administration brought the handbook earlier this year, and, uh, the board asked us to. Uh, bring it back and have a counseling, uh, the counselors look at it, so that's exactly what we did. We had a counselor rep from each of the, uh, areas come. Uh, they, um, talked over. You know, basically, how, how do we want to do this, and so, uh, Nate Bisan as well as Liz Castorino took it. Um, they were able to add, basically, they added a lot of things that they already had in place. So it's, it's really, when you see things like, um. You know, assessing suicide risk, for example, this is something that they have been utilizing, so now it's just in one place.
Hmm.
So, uh, upon your approval. Uh, the RSA as well as our, uh. Policy requires that it be now placed on the district website, as well as each of the school websites, so that there's. Immediate public access to it.
Oh, good.
So they did, they did a great job, I really want to commend them for, for their work and taking it, and I, I feel like they just took it to a new level, so.
It is certainly comprehensive.
Yeah.
What did you make of this?
By now, it's amazing, that one's good. Um, I did have one question on the intro on the front, I spoke in West Coast of America and.
Yeah, that's a requirement.
Really?
That is a state requirement, I know. It does, but there's very specific language around what, what it has to say.
Okay.
In fact, we would have, we have to have it for everything, I mean, the school lunch. Program, we, we needed to have a statement. Um, yeah. So, you're right, it does read differently.
Okay, as long as it's the way it's supposed to be, I'm happy. Um.
Well, I like that it says, and other designated, so it's not like you can, you can. Oh. Pick up the four H kids.
Right, or any, exactly.
That's why I thought it was, I heard that they mentioned certain ones, but.
They mentioned, yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, right, well, that would be your normal question, yeah, exactly, no, probably the state did.
Right. I'll just follow along sometime.
I just, yeah, I just had a couple of things, uh, like. The first paragraph, it talks about, this is probably standard language for the district, I imagine, for. The not, not discriminate on the basis of, I'm just wondering, because of the nature of this, if we should be more expansive on. The classes that are, that we don't discriminate against, since this pertains to. You know, such as sexual orientation, gender identity, things like that, I know that can fall into just Boston. Into one of those other categories, but anyway, I just, just a thought.
Okay.
I don't know, maybe that's just standard for all our documents.
It's pretty standard, yes.
Yeah.
And it may be because of the changes in federal law this past hundred and twenty-six whatever days.
So.
Where you don't say a lot of that.
To speak to that.
Yeah.
The other day, I called, uh, Jim O'Shaughnessy, who is, um. Since Matt is, you probably heard, is leaving, so Jim O'Shaughnessy is taking his place. Because I had a question about, uh, some of the things that we're working with, and how do we deal with this? So he, thi- this is what he said. Right now, all, all the legal offices, school board associations are inundated with what do we do? He said, it's going to take two or three months to kind of sift through this. Then what their plan is, is they will have a meeting. An, an invitational meeting for the schools that they work with. And districts they work with, and then they will take us through any policy changes, he said, don't worry about changing them right now. Because we really don't know what they need to say.
Hmm.
So that would be an example where, in the fall, if we see that this information is changed. Then we'd come back to you or just tell you, we're going to change this in the following documents to. Uh, make sure that it aligns with the new laws.
I know the, when you get into the meat of the document, it does cover those bits and classes.
Yes.
Of individuals, so that, I thought that was good, um. And. Uh, you know, what I saw throughout the document is. There's references to CPS, Child Protective Services, and then DCYF. Do we need to make it one, like DCYF, we know is for New Hampshire, so it's consistent? I don't know, just a thought. On that, um.
I see.
And then, uh, another thing I had was, how often is it reviewed for updating? Because there's a lot of re, good, great resources in there, but you know, those can change.
So per policy, it has to be looked at every year.
Okay. So annually.
So as far as the consistency with CPS and DCYF, it's probably a lot, has a lot to do with. But which particular person you're used to and who, who's going, who uses the terminology. However, if, if the board so wishes to, to accept this tonight, what I'll do is I'll go back and look at that and. Make sure and go back in and make, that, that there's consistency there. Good point.
Um, and then what's the plan for rolling it out, like implementing it?
So right now, because the counselors worked on it, they all have it, however. Uh, my plan is, we have in a few weeks, the, um. The principals and administrative team meeting, so making sure that they see it, they, and they've seen it all along. As we talked about it, but seeing the final copy, I'll send a final copy, well. I'll make sure that if they have any questions, they, they either talk to me or talk with their counselors.
Then do the teachers and staff get trained?
Yes, oh, yes, in fact, that was another conversation with the counselors. That they wanted some time at the beginning of the year to go over this with their staffs.
Great, great bucket. Thank you.
Thank you. So the quest, the, the discussion about DCF and, and CPS, I then did a quick Google search.
Very good.
So, um, DCF is, is the overarching, is the overarching, um, agency, CPS would be within. Okay, so CPS, DCYF, um, the CPS specifically.
So CPS, DCYF, um, the CPS specifically works on. Um, this agency responds to reports of child abuse and neglect specifically, whereas DCYF.
It's everything.
Has a lot of things that it does.
Per view overall.
Good to know.
So, yes, so. So within the document.
Yeah.
It's probably different depending on what they're discussing.
Well, but CPS is viewed oftentimes generically.
Right.
So and i- if you look through the document, sometimes it's capitalized. So that's referring to maybe the part of the agency, but then there's other places where it's not, so it's just like.
Check that the term is.
Yeah, I'll make sure.
But I, I know in New Hampshire, it's DCYF, the agency that governs that.
Yeah.
Would anybody um, like to make a motion to approve this with those changes that will be like that?
On motion to approve? Second.
Are there any other questions, concerns, discussion with this document? What's that? It doesn't like a windmill. All in favor?
I, I.
Any opposed? Thank you very much for everybody who worked on that document. We'll be posting on our websites. This week, as soon as we can do that, okay, thank you.
To my. Beginning of school.
Beginning of school, oh, but I think. My understanding was that I had to be as soon as possible.
Yeah.
All right. We are to the Assistant Special Education Director position.
So thanks for letting me come back and speak to you guys again about this uh, position. I here to be the top role, the Assistant Director for special education. And what I do is I create this organizational chart to share the, I know I handed one app to you, that's fine. I couldn't figure out making any large scans on, I was struggling, so I think there's a way to just.
Pointing at the big screen.
Pointed at the big screen. All right. Okay, so if you look here, up here, right, okay, I don't want to make everybody sick. So I highlighted the Assistant Director position and the things that this person does, would do. And let me just, before I highlight this, let me just speak to this. Here's what I'm really looking for. As you can see from here, there's a variety of, of departments, the variety of things that I oversee right now. It goes all the way from the office people to related services, your speech language pathologist, your occupational therapist, your recreational therapist. We also have our programs, our specialized programs that I share with the principals to oversee, so that's deep steps on those programs focused. Then we have special education teachers and our paraprofessionals, which really the principals are overseeing, but I should have a hand in also. Helping out with that. And right now, because I'm spread so thin, I don't get the time to get out to the buildings to really see what's going on with our special education teachers. I really need to be doing that. I would purpose of support to take some of these things off of my plate, so I can get out to the buildings more and do what I need to be doing. So when you look at this, I highlighted. The Assistant Director, which I would be taking one of my student service coordinators and turning them into an Assistant Director. They would LEA, they would supervise and mentor the new student service coordinators that were onboarding. Both people who are onboarding are gonna be brand new to these positions, they're gonna need a lot of support. This person would also be overseeing part of our early learning center, which they do now, but this would really put them under, that under their umbrella. And then also down here, it's hard to see. They'd be overseeing the board certified behavior analysts too. That's one of the contracted service providers. In addition to that, this Assistant Director would take care of all the out of district placements, overseeing those, so they case manage those. They would take care of any of the court placements, they'd be taking care of um, the extended school year program, so that's our ESY program also. So they would take all that under their umbrella. I would obviously meet with this person on a regular basis and still meet with our student service coordinators on a regular basis, but that would free me up. To do some other things. So my fear is without this position next year, I'm still gonna struggle to get onto the buildings. Because I'm gonna have to help oversee some of these other pieces. So does that make sense on that piece there? And so looking at this, I really see it's a nominal cost, um. If we look over here in this section, up in your corner, the overall budget impact is minimal. It's a projected five percent increase to the current student service coordinator's contract. I would take four thousand seventy-nine dollars, which right now it's a stipend position for the ESY. And take that away and move it into the salary position. And then I'd be looking at probably like another four thousand, a little over four thousand dollars. She's doing that now, yeah, so we would just take it out of the stipend piece and move it into the salary piece. So that's my hope and dream.
Questions? So make sure I understand.
Yeah.
That for ten thousand dollars-ish, plus or minus whatever goes with the um, taxes. And we're not adding an FTE, we're redirecting an FTE?
Correct. Yeah, so I'd have an Assistant Director and only two student service coordinators, not three. So I'm not creating a new position, I just want to change this one position to be Assistant Director. The other part of this, and I brought this up last time, is also part of a succession plan. Um, obviously I'm not planning on retiring soon, but that day will come.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, but that day will come and I want, I'm seamless, I want it to be someone who can step in and it just seamlessly goes to the next person and they do better job than I did. So that's all I'm looking forward to.
The person you have in mind for the assistant, they're on board with it?
Yes. They are interested in it. They're right now working towards getting their certification as a special education director, it'll take a couple of years, but they're all on board with this. Um, so this gives me an opportunity to mentor that person also, if it does turn out to be that person, doesn't have to be that person. Uh, but my hope would be it would be that person, so.
Yeah, is, is the five percent increase just salary or is it all?
I'm like, you need to see how we have this.
So base salary, um, should keep her base salary. We would build the stipend into that salary. And then add five percent on top of that, that's what I think where you're getting the technical, okay?
So is it the five percent's just salary, not? How, I mean, how do these go up, right?
So.
Insurance, we go up and.
Change, so what will change is New Hampshire's retirement, Social Security, Medicare. Um, disability workers comp for tiny, so New Hampshire's retirement system, because you're a te- teacher, right? You're treated as a teacher, yeah.
Yeah.
So twenty cents on the dollar. Basically with all of that, everyone's wrapped in, maybe twenty-four cents on the dollar, right? So twenty-four hundred, so twelve, twelve thousand five hundred-ish.
So more like an eighty percent increase to somebody on.
To the budget. Although it's not complete to the, to the budget itself, because, well, yes, because you're gonna put the four thousand into the base and then go over that.
But I mean, the four thousand.
It's already. Yes, it's already being paid. Yeah, so it's gonna be a little less than that. It'll be like, well, that's what you were gonna say, right Lori, ten thousand? Eleven hundred.
I, I mean, I, I think it's good planning, looking ahead and for um, I mean, that's a lot that you have under you. For you to, to do, and I, I think it makes sense.
Probably the second or busiest position in the whole school district.
Sometimes it feels like that, and I have a great, I didn't want to say though, I have a great team. That these, the people under me make it so that I can do this, and that's such a great team, it would be also possible, but these guys are phenomenal. So because of that, I can't, all the tasks can do a lot of it. So, but I would love to get out of school more and really be in those classrooms and see what our special education teachers are doing on a day-to-day basis, and they want it out there. So I always feel bad, they definitely ask, they say, we want you out here to see what we're doing. They want advice, but they also want to show me the good things too, and I try to get out there when I can, but it's difficult. So.
So what's our next move?
Just approval of the new position.
I'll make a motion that we approve the redirection of funds from. The Student Services Coordinator FTE to an Assistant uh, Director position. Assistant Special Ed Director position, is that what we're calling?
And so approving the, the new position as well.
Approving the new position and the increase in, in dollar amount not to exceed thirteen thousand.
A second, then. Did you have a question on that?
I don't, I think this was very.
Okay.
Just excited.
Is there any other discussion on the creation of this position and the appropriation for it?
Well, I, I appreciate the fact that you're trying to fund it within your own department without adding, just blindly adding an FTE. I think that's commendable.
Thanks.
Well, and, and um, the last, the last time why I spoke to the fact that we were going through a. I, a withdrawal study, and I think that in looking at how you have this s- spread out, um. I think that having somebody who's, who, I know that when I was, when, when Alex, back in the, back in the old days, when my good friend Alex was doing this position. She spent all of her time in out of district and going to, to all of those places, that was before we had all of the different coordinators. And so um, that's, we kind of moved away from that and put it back on the Special Ed Director, so I think that it's a really important piece, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Just one thing, I just wanted to acknowledge that you think you created this team where somebody can step into this role, there seems to be a need for that.
Absolutely, I, I enjoy the district, I buy the district, so I want to be successful.
All right, all in favor? Any opposed?
Thank you.
Watch your things.
Well, no, I'm sure it's like the whole rock is just.
You know, it's exciting to see, we've seen some really good changes in the department in the last few years. With the programming and things like that, so this is just one more step in a really good direction, so. Excited for it. All right, the next order of business is to, um, to talk about a teacher negotiation. Um, committee, we have. Everybody wants to take on one more, correct?
Nobody wants to be on this one, bro. So much money. Surprised we're at this point already, I thought we had one more year to go, or we went to negotiations. No?
No, so this, we have the support staff, then the teachers, then we're on for a year, and then we start again. Okay, so. The negotiations for this year will be for the twenty-seventh school year, so we'll vote on it, right?
Why six, why seven?
Yeah.
Right, I believe you. Look, you just did this.
We did.
I would be happy to. I'd be on that, but I would like someone else who's. More familiar about it, you know, with how that works with me. And do you usually have?
We usually have a couple of families, so.
And there's no lawyer that helps to, uh, your person, we do have a lawyer representative.
Um, yeah, Jim O'Shaughnessy will be with us through that process. So. So anybody else who has any remote?
Gotta settle it by January twentieth, fifteenth, right-ish.
I think we can, the fact that I've already heard that there's work being done, then uh, questions being prepared, negotiating. Opportunities already thought about, tells me that everybody's on board, the uh. Association's already sent us a letter, I just saw it. So they're all ready to go, so I don't.
January thirteenth?
Is the drop dead date for PA. Usually want it done by December.
I would expect it would be.
I said, so factors into our budget discussions.
Shouldn't, but yes, it will. Because people forget that when you vote on a CBA, it's gonna add to the bottom line, that's not gonna get carved out, to tell them every year. Sorry.
So does that mean you're willing?
I'm on the budget committee, guys. Yeah, unless somebody else really wants to do it, yeah. I mean, I'm a logical choice, because I, I know it, but somebody needs to. I'm not gonna be here forever, right? To learn it and, yeah, and get some pieces of it.
If I could partner with somebody.
Would be great.
And you already have such a good footing in those departments, and so appreciate that.
Even if like Jenny wanted to.
And also Bill serves on, uh, as HR and. Um, like Alyssa said, there's a, already been a lot of work done over time.
So I think with you, I'm happy to support if somebody can't go or if he doesn't.
Do all for them, yeah.
Absolutely. All right, so thank you both very, very much. Glad that you have a committee.
I was on the Zoom call, we're there at two thirty today, right, different district.
Yeah, well, uh, between Bill and I, we'll send her something that says who will be noncommittee members, we're ready to go, so. Fantastic, thank you very, very much. All right. Would any of our listeners like to speak? Would you like to make a statement? Nice to have you here in the room. All right, so you've done, um, we do have a nonpublicity action.
I'm sorry, I don't know who the gentleman is.
Oh, my husband. I'm so sorry, I just.
I do know him, I, all my glasses on, okay, sorry.
Would you please introduce?
No, he doesn't want to. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for your support and Lynn and your wife too. For sharing her with us.
Yeah, I says normally when I see him, I have fear. It's not why I don't, yeah. It's been a long month.
All right.
The two hundred course about the timeline before we go into nonpublic.
I will entertain a motion to move that up in the agenda, but.
Yeah, it's in draft. So our budget timeline is, is in draft. Um, I don't know that the budget committee has looked at it again. But I will say that they were, I'm probably supposed to tell you a whole bunch of things, but I didn't bring my notes, um, so. I will tell you that they are very interested in having a cooperative meeting. Yeah, like a little retreat or whatever, to be, yeah, to be, to be together.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
They wanted to. Date on that.
Yeah, so I think that they were very excited about that. I don't see it on there, so, so we might wanna try to. I, I was gonna, once the board decides the date, send out a doodle poll. Or I can send out a doodle poll for all the bodies involved.
So I had a.
Do we have a retreat date?
I have one in here for uh, July twenty-sixth, but that's really soon, so should look at some dates, we're gonna run out of somewhere.
I just July twentys. Is that a Saturday?
It is a Saturday.
Oh, okay. Why that brings a bomb. Um, I can doodle poll. Everybody. Like us and.
And, um, okay.
And see, so what do we want to do, so here's the question, because there's. The five of us can make the determination for everybody else. Do you love that?
Um, it's, we're never.
No, I know, but what if we did like ask in the morning from nine to eleven and then have them join us from, I don't know, eleven to one or so.
I would love to only pick up one Saturday and do a long session.
Yeah, so whatever the hours, want me to put out some options to everybody?
I think that's.
And do like a what, what do you want, nine to eleven or nine to twelve and one to two? Or?
Do you think that's enough time that the budget committee will need in order to?
I don't know, they know, they just want to talk.
I think we should.
I think a couple hours.
I think we should plan for a couple hours, and if we're done sooner, we can all just sit. I don't know if I told you all that. We have the opportunity to use the same location that we had years ago, which was very relaxing and such a good conversation, so.
So do you want me to do the location and time?
No, just time.
Okay.
Locations.
Okay.
Date and time.
You want an alternative date?
I think we should plan, get the top two, just in case we have to postpone it for whatever reason.
You want to send me those dates after, or can we discuss them now?
Oh, I think we should discuss it now, I just wanted to send out a poll, I know, because it could be, um.
You're looking for a Saturday?
In August.
In July?
Oh, July, we're gonna try for the twenty-sixth.
Do you have a?
And then August, do we wanna try to? And then August, do we wanna try the? Do we want to be closer to the opening or far, further away?
Um, I would prefer the sixteenth or the twenty-third, which is closer.
You want me to put both of those out?
That'd be great.
Okay, alright, so, July twenty-sixth, August sixteenth, and twenty-fourth.
Do the twenty-third.
Okay, alright. And maybe we'll just.
One question, is, is Gabe still the chair?
No, um. Um, Garrett Neal is the chair. Yeah, Gabe is not on the committee, he did a reword. Yeah, it's, um, let me see, gonna tax my brain memory here, it's Garrett Neal. He's from Charstown. Hold on, I have to look, cause I might, my brain is not good. Amanda's still on it. Um, Jerry is still on here, Anne's still on there. Steve D'Alessio's still on there, so you're four, and, uh, Chris Balding. So you have five originals and you have three new ones, so Garrett Neal is new, and then.
Susan.
Yeah, what's Susan Clark, yeah, Susan Clark. Oh, actually, no, Amanda's, J.C.'s been on it before too. And then there's. Oh, yes, Ryan scooted over for Apple. Yeah, so it's nice, it's a, yeah, it's a good, it's a good group, has a lot of good background. Yeah, good questions, trying to get to the meat of what we really need, less on the false.
Alright, well, thank you for putting that out, I'm looking for, we're probably. Sitting down and working on some things. So we're good with that?
Make a motion to accept the trade report.
Any questions, concerns, other thoughts? Seeing that, all in favor? Alright, perfect, thank you. Um, at this time, I have a list of non-public or contracts, and. Thank you very much. Alright, thank you guys for being here. Yes, thanks, I'm super excited, thanks.
First motion is, a motion to extend the interim superintendent's contract through the end of August.
Thank you, all in favor? Any opposed? Alright, the motion carries, thank you very much.
Uh, second motion is to approve the recommendations for the personnel matter.
All in favor?
Motion to adjourn.
Yeah, I have a, well, before that, I have a motion to seal the minutes.
Motion to seal the minutes from the personnel matter, effective immediately.
Uh, do we need a? Time for me to say definitely?
Definitely.
All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you very much.
Motion to adjourn at, what is it, six fifty-four.
Second. All in favor? Thank you all very much. Thank you, Brendan.